Call this regular meeting, Grand Forks City Council to order. First item of business is to adopt the agenda, September the 3rd, regular meeting. Can I have that motion?
Yes.
Councillor Studley, Councillor Krog, all those in favor? In camera.
Questions from the members?
Rising from the minutes, Councillor Zielinski.
Sorry, we haven't approved the motion.
Do you want to raise an issue before we -- we did vote on those.
On the agenda.
On the agenda, and do you want to...
Two questions about the minutes going up.
Before we adopt them?
Yeah, the first one that's probably more pertinent is, I thought, where's the number here? R271, 19, has to do with the funding of the fire department, it says it's carried. So can you tell me why it's on the agenda for tonight?
I don't understand that either, but...
Okay. We've got here two motions that are very similar, one that was passed last regular meeting, and one that's on the agenda tonight, and I'm trying to discern the difference between the two.
Okay, and this is in August the...
Regular minutes of August 12th. Council, you get ready.
Yeah. Okay, I see it. All right, and let's scrap number B, we're not, the in-camera meeting tonight, everybody's noticing that, that we're not doing in-camera.
So, Mr. Mayor, that resolution was, I believe, Councillor Zielinski last time asked to have the item deferred to tonight, so the resolution actually reads that council defers to following items.
Oh, okay.
So that motion was carried at the end of the day.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Reddick, sorry.
Okay, that's clarified for you.
Yeah, one other question, previous motion, R267, council will formal request to the, oh no, sorry, 268, Grand Forks formally requests both provincial and federal government additional funds for expropriated properties, can anyone tell me how that's going to look?
Yeah.
Has the letter been stamped as how is this formal request going to happen?
Through the mayor. So in terms of the request, a letter has been drafted internally and prepared for discussion with council, but it was not ready in time for making the agenda, so I think we're talking about a follow-up item for the 16th.
Thank you. And we're ready to adopt a minutes then from the regular meeting of August the 12th. We do, we have the adoption of the special go-in-camera minutes to start with, can I have that motion please? Councillor Moslin, Second Councillor Korlick, all those in favor? And moving down to adopting the regular August 12th regular meeting minutes, a motion to adopt those. Councillor Korlick, Second, Councillor Zielinski, and all those in favor? Okay, we're registered, da-da-da-da, we're down to council reports. And I will start with Councillor Thompson.
Thank you. Monday, August 26th, there were several workshops held for council. The first workshop dealt with electrical field called charging stations, the second provided an update on the flood plain mappings, and the last was an update by the acting fire chief. August 28th, I attended the Boundary Better at Home Community Consultation and Stakeholder Meeting sponsored by the provincial government and managed by the United Way of the Orman Land. This program is aimed at assisting older adults to remain in their homes by providing non-medical support services. As the city's liaison to the Downtown Business Association, I have been told aware that comments made by some members of council have resulted in issues arising between the DBA and some residents of North Rock. I don't believe that the comments were anything more than expressions of opinion and were not intended to pit one area against another. Further, I am also aware that there are current council members of council who find it difficult to support the decisions made by the previous council in the summer of 2018. These decisions were made based on the final peer review Dobson report and were the basis of several ministerial meetings that I attended at the UBCM last September. As I have previously stated, I do not want to risk losing the DMAT grant by making any alterations to the application that may result in unintended consequences. Accordingly, I am asking council's consideration in debating the following resolutions. That council support disaster mitigation adaptation fund as grant as outlined in the applications submitted to the federal and provincial governments in January 2019. That council speak in unison in support of implementing permanent risk reduction measures in DMAT and subsequent flood mitigation programs. And that council instruct staff to provide, at a minimum, quarterly information updates regarding the progress of the DMAT projects.
Councillor, how do you wish to put these on the table? Do you wish them separately sponsored as motions, or do you want to put them as a package?
I'm going to suggest that we put it as a package at this time, and if I can get a second, then we can debate, and if there's some work something that needs to be done, I'm open to that as well.
And the Seconder for those motions, Councillor Korlick, and open to discussion. In my mind, this does not mean that we stop trying to change the DMAT grant to better suit our people and our community. And I just need to see that as clarity, that this doesn't stop us from... The items that are not going to risk the funding, I understand your wording, but I'm thinking there's a lot of things that we can still do in modifications that will not be risking the funding. That just a conundrum. And Councillor Moslin.
Your worship, I was hoping we could do these ads here, but, you know, I would basically just, I would really like to just amend the first motion by just putting that council supports a disaster mitigation adaptation fund grant, period.
And leave out the as outlined in a...
That way, I would support it. You'll recall, Mayor, that the grant was submitted in January, but we were not asked. It was just submitted. This, and I want to thank Councillor Thompson, is the first time we've been asked in public about that grant application. I, too much work, too much heartache, too much has gone under the bridge to turn my, for me to turn my back, but I cannot support what happened in January, because for one thing, two areas of town were not in the grant, they were dropped. I can't support that now. And I'm thinking of Highway 3 East and Riverside.
So can we have a motion for them for this amendment, and we look for a Seconder?
So that, you know, I don't want to, that would enable me to support, but that, too much, we've gained, we've learned a lot since January 2019.
Councillor Thompson, can you see changing that? Do we need a formalization of this, or do you agree?
I can support that. I'm going to just, through you, to the flood recovery manager, Graham, would that be an issue to alter that? Graham helped me with this, some of these resolutions, so I don't want to, I would like his comments as well, if that's agreeable with your worship.
And Mr. Watt?
Through the mayor, I don't know that that would present a problem, I don't know that it wouldn't, in terms of, I think that in hearing from council about the level of concern in Councillor Thompson's report, the idea of having council musically and spirit and principle supporting the hard decisions, but doing everything they can to make it acceptable to the community is really, you know, we're having a lot of back and forth about some of the substance in the grant, and I think the concern expressed was that that could itself derail the process of proceeding with the work. I don't know that the changing that first sentence would affect that, it's still in support of the DMAT grant, DMAT proposal.
Further on this matter?
So then I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Your Seconder accepts it.
Yep.
Councillor Korlick, further discussion on this? We're looking at all three of those motions?
Well, it's discussion on the first.
Right, but there are three in the package that Councillor Thompson placed.
Yeah.
I'm trying to not have to say it. So if that amendment was acceptable, then I'm assuming we're moving on to the second paragraph, and I guess what I really would like to, in order for me to support that, I would like to just scratch the words "in unison."
And...
Because, you know, council does speak, struggles to speak with one voice, but democracy's noisy. And I really do respect how hard council works at these motions, and I, once a motion is passed, right, I certainly support that. When if I've had a chance to vote on something and lost, well, I suck it up, I move on, I support what council said. After all, I do respect tremendously your opinions. Anyhow, so I would like to say that to improve that second paragraph by striking the words "in unison," and then certainly council will speak, sure, in support of implementing permanent risk reduction measures in DMAT and subsequent flood mitigation, sure.
Okay, and Councillor Thompson, then, Councillor Krog?
Yeah, mine was answered.
Okay, Councillor Thompson.
I hear what Councillor Moslin is saying. I guess my concern is that, I'm asking council to speak in support, like, as a council, that we support the implementing of the permanent risk reduction measures, et cetera. I know that there are councilors that have issues with the grant application, but I think that because of the sensitivity of it, and I heard the comments this morning, particularly from Nora, Nora, thank you, that wasn't my mother's name, I should know that, I apologize. But I think if, to me, it's important that we all support this particular resolution, whether we agree with it or we don't. And so I guess that's why I moved added the word "speak in unison." If it's an issue of deleting the words "in unison," that council speaks in support of implementing, I don't think that's going to drastically change the intent of the resolution.
The Seconder's opinion on that?
I agree. I think as a democratic situation, that we vote on something that's supportive to, or whatever it is, I think in the end, it's, that's how the vote will go, and we should be supporting what we're seeing. Speaking in unison, we're not always going to say the same thing, but if we're actually supporting it, I think that would work, yeah.
Okay, so that too is an amendment in the second clause?
Friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Agreed?
Thank you.
And Councillor Moslin?
Well, thank you, your worship. I, you know, I look ahead, there is going to be, we're going to be asked all sorts of things about DMAT in this term, and probably the next term. And it's not going to be easy, and sometimes it's going to be painful.
You and I probably won't be here for that.
Anyhow, I'll make it to the end of the year. Anyhow, so the final paragraph, I just want to insert, if I could, that certainly, I know that staff really tries to actually give us some sort of update every month at the committee of the whole, so I would like to ask if it would be appropriate to insert the word "for review."
And how would you put that?
Council has been charged, the city is charged with administering this grant, which is going to be a compelling and maybe almost overwhelming task ahead of us. Yeah, we're going to be asked to make changes in direction and all sorts of things in the time ahead. So I just want to acknowledge that council is not only just receiving information, but also directing. So I want to put in the words "for review," and that's more, okay?
Okay.
Just the wording again before we move on, Councillor?
I insert the words after updates "for review."
Yeah, the VA will have something to say.
For review, okay. Councillor Krog?
Yeah, the "for review" makes it sound like, I'll get something, I'll review it, and then I'll okay it, but it's already done. So we receive it for information, and we view it.
We can ask questions.
And we ask questions on it, but I'm just not sure how the review would work considering these are updates regarding the progress, so it makes it sound like that's already been done. Does that make sense?
I think, I'm trying to, I do know council to be just the receivers of information. I want them to do the responsible thing, what they were elected to do, and what they're charged to do with this grant, which is to deliver it.
Continually review, which is what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, now.
Okay, and Diane?
Okay, so I think Councillor Krog there had it right in the part there, when we're given quarterly updates, it's actually something that's already carrying on. I think, you know, what Councillor Moslin is referring to is, you know, for making changes to the, like, a tweak or something to the grant or in the capital planning, that would normally come to council anyways, if there was going to be some sort of change that's happening, but an update is just simply an update, it'd be already done, so it's kind of hard to question something that would be already in progress.
And speaking in favor of leaving the language as is, is that when we receive agendas and reports and alike, we do review, that is our job, and it is our job to ask questions.
Ongoing.
Ongoing questions. So again, you know, this is, to me, this is work that's already been done or is in progress, and, you know, I don't want to get involved in the management of how the grant is administered, I don't think that's our job, but just to ask questions and to ensure that it's going in the direction that we want, but...
Councillor Zielinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to request staff to maybe get these motions up on the board, so we can actually, with all the changes that we've heard, that we can actually see what we're voting on. So if we could do that, please, that'd be excellent. And if I do have the amendments correctly, the first motion takes out the reference to, basically, the Dobson report, we're just supporting the program. And to me, that was a big part of these motions, is that, yeah, we support the government giving us money to help fix our city, but I thought it was more than that, I was thought that here's a plan, step-by-step plan, that the city's going to follow, and we wanted confirmation from council that that's what we're going to do. If people don't know it, I do have different ideas on how we can still protect the people down there and deal with future floods, other than what's in the Dobson report. But again, that was mentioned this morning, once council gives clear direction on this is the direction we're going, then it's council's direction. It's not individual councils, even though we may have different opinions, different ideas, so I have no problem following council's direction, regardless of how the vote goes. But that one detail, as far as referring back to the Dobson report, or at least the application to say this is what we're going to do, I think it takes away from the motion.
So you're speaking in support of that modification?
No, I'm, I won't be supporting the motion, period, but I think with those words stricken out of the first motion, it kind of takes away from exactly what I think we were trying to get to.
Okay, further...
We should have taken it one at a time, then.
We still can, according to whatever Councillor Thompson...
If that's easier for council to debate and to changes, to the motions individually, I'm prepared to do that.
And working flexibly here, but Councillor Krog, you've been patient?
Yeah, to go back to Councillor Moslin and the third one, where, I can't remember exactly how he phrased it, but it was, it's council's responsibility to administer, and it almost sounded like that we were exactly what Councillor Thompson was saying, we're way too fingers in the pie type thing. Our job as council, if we're proceeding, is, and it's laid out in the grant, to hire somebody that will administer the grant, because we're not, we all have information in our backgrounds, but we are not engineers, we're not this, we're not that, we set policy. So if, you know, we're looking at, it's not council, it's, this is what was requested by the government, and they want a person to actually run it, and not us messing things up.
Okay, Councillor Moslin, before we go to...
Just briefly to rebut that, my intent was never to do that, but the city, the council is responsible for regular updates to government.
And to the public.
And to the public, yes, so, no...
Okay, let's go back to whether you want to split these up, let's go one at a time.
Let's go one at a time.
And your Seconder?
Sure.
Okay, first motion then is the council supports a disaster mitigation adaptation fund grant, period. That reads, I can't read the words, but, yeah, I memorized everything. Further discussion on that particular motion? Councillor Moslin?
Your worship, I'm trying to read Councillor Zielinski here. Did you want the wording back in? I mean, we did agree in naught that we would take the wording out, so I'm prepared to support that motion as is on the screen right now. The words deleted, before the words deleted.
And I guess my comment is, it's very generic, it's just a grant application out there. For us, it means more. It means $53 million, it means specific projects, it means buying people out in Rockville, it means a lot more than just there's a grant application out there that we can apply for. And I think it's those details that we want to get clear of, you know, where council is moving, and more specifically, the idea that council believes that buying out those houses in North Rockville and making it a flood plain is the essence of this program.
Councillor Thompson?
I would suggest, with respect, that we put the motion back to the original form, and with myself and Councillor Korlick moving it second again, then if Councillor Moslin wants to make another motion to amend that with the deletion of those words, that would be much cleaner, and I think would maybe alleviate what your think?
Yeah, I guess, and correct me if I'm wrong, council, is, we want the public, we want other government agencies, we want staff to know that, yes, we're proceeding down this line, we're going to hire a consultant to work out deals with these people, to buy their places, we know that there's flood walls to build, we've got some idea where they're at, and I think that's what that first motion says it. We've got a plan here, we've asked for money to do this plan, and we're going to carry it out, this plan. And with it stopping short of just, we, you know, it's like, we believe there should be a bridge maintenance, a grant funding out there too, great thing, it doesn't tell us much, but we support the grant, so that's, all I'm saying is, saying specifically that it was our application on January 19th gives us more detail on what we're actually saying to the public.
Stay the same, and are we losing Councillor Moslin on this then?
Yes, you would, your worship, because I cannot support that particular application, although I'm certainly grateful in September to finally get a chance to voice that.
But there's nothing to preclude you from bringing forward a motion to amend.
Oh, it would be lost, I'm pretty sure, as the intent of the meeting is pretty clear. But it would give me an opportunity to provide you with some wire-by-argument.
Whoa, you guys.
I've got lots of arguments.
Councillor Thompson, it's your call, do we go to the question here, or is there further debate on this matter?
Well, I would go to the question, unless Councillor Moslin wants to propose the amendment. And make a motion to amend.
No, I, but I would like the opportunity to briefly speak to that motion, now that the motion is changed, you've changed the intent of the motion.
Changed back to the original wording?
Can I address the original motion?
Then you are free to do that.
Okay. All right, in that's the case, I've managed to snatch victory from the jaws of defeat, or whatever. Anyhow, in July, I submitted a bottom request, some questions to Mr. Watt about the DMAT grant. I never really got clear answers, never got any answers in writing. One of my first concern was the predictive flood plain mapping, that hadn't been done at the time of the grant application in January, and it's only recently been completed, okay? Well, I don't want to just talk about that, but that, those results are now in, and can illuminate the grant project going forward. So that's the first thing, modeling is now in, and it needs to be examined. Secondly, another major concern of that grant, that particular grant application of January 2019, was the mitigation that was left undone. Too much of the city was left unprotected. Highway 3 East was not raised, and they were going to be facing a new dike on the opposite side of the shore. The community, the neighborhood of Riverside would still be at risk of higher flooding. In fact, that DMAT grant application does not cover the downtown works, but it never did. So that was certainly missing as well. And the other, the other major concern I had, there's four, there was the third one, was the flexibility of funding. Have we established how funding is going to be dispersed, regularly, based on what? If, for example, is, if there's any flexibility... If, for example, is, if there's any flexibility in the funding, if we, if our, if we manage to save something in one part of the project, can we apply it to something that was outside of the project? How flexible is the funding? No one, to my knowledge, has asked. The flexibility of funding also applies to some sort of testament of what the in-kind costs. There's no such thing as in-kind, it's going to cost the city to undertake to satisfactorily migrate North Rockville. It's going to be, there's going to be costs. And so flexibility of funding is not only that can we apply the money we get to different places, what about the money that's going to cost to help move that along? And finally, of course, what about cost overruns? The fourth concern I had was dealing with the buyouts. Do we have enough people to manage that many buyouts? Do we have the capacity to deal with these many files in an orderly and transparent way? I'm concerned that the situation is way too, paid too complicated and too cumbersome for that to go forward. Anyhow, so those were my concerns about the January 2019 submission. There was no predictive flood mapping at the time, there is now, we should use it. There's lots of mitigation that was left undone in that application. There's no sign of flexibility of funding, are applying that funding yet. And dealing with the buyouts, it's going to be a long, painful process, you know, so mayor, I'd speak against that.
You think it restricts you from continually, continuation of questioning of certain actions within that grant by voting for this?
Um, well, no, I'm...
You talked about squaring it up to council's decision.
After council votes for it or against it, or whatever council decides, I'd support what the council decides, of course, right? I really do think you need to at least allow floodplain mapping to illuminate the plan. However, that's just me. Anyhow, so that's, those are my arguments against that particular iteration of the DMAT grant that was defined in January 2019.
Counselor Krog?
There was one of the comments about the people that weren't included in the grant. There was rationale for that, and that was brought to us by the EFR.
We ran out of grant money. We had to come out because we couldn't afford to put them in. Ran out of grant money, we had a ceiling of grant money.
Is that true?
I think that's...
Yeah, there was more to it than that. That staff would like to...
Counsel, I guess what I'm asking is, if we vote for this, will, will there still be room for council to work collectively on this without having a counselor at this point shooting from the sidelines on it? Are we going to move forward as a collective group?
Sorry, mayor, I'm privileged. I'm not going to shoot from the sidelines.
I've never heard that.
No, and I'm saying that that's what you don't want, you told me before.
Yeah.
So I'm not accusing you of shooting from the sidelines, I'm just saying, are we, are we going to undermine or support our decision at this point as a collective group? Counselor Zelinski?
I believe that's what why the motion's on the floor, see whether we're going to collectively support it or not.
You feel we should go ahead with the vote and then raise that question if it comes up?
Yeah, I, you know, I was very public on, two weeks ago, thinking that the motion was taking us down this road, so it's no place that I don't think we...
Okay. Counselor Thompson, your call, are we at the point where we should vote on this? So the motion on the floor is the full wording, as Counselor Thompson originally...
Three separate, or are we doing...
We're doing one at a time.
One at a time. Seconded by Counselor Corlap. The question, all those in favor, opposed, motion's carried, four to three. Moving on to number two, unless there's further on, one, we're moving on to motion number two. And again, we have already struck in unison, the council speaks in support of implementing this word, we're going without the in-unison wording.
I'm going to suggest that that word be put back in, and if there is an appetite to put forward a motion to amend with the deletion of those two words...
That motion will be made.
Yep.
Are you ready for the question on number two?
No.
Counselor Krog?
Same as number one. One of the things is, is following DMAT. I can only see that there's two choices. You either live with DMAT, or you turn it down and start over. Either way, whatever council, I did go with that, I'm not sure how the public would react to it. But it doesn't stop us from tweaking.
Not at all.
Where we can to get the most bang out of their buck, and try and make it our, don't like using as much as we can wiggle room to play with to try and make as many residents suffering the smallest amount of, or damaged and hurt. So I see that as being there, I see that we are still going to be advocating, and we are still going to be advocating for pre-flood.
Yes.
And looking at other options that we even discussed today. So I think from what the grant says, unless we're going back to start over, because it all seems to hinge on North Rockville, because the others, there's some purchasing here, some there, but a lot of it's works and flood mitigation, so it's just the huge human factor, right? And that part about implementing permanent risk reduction, that's what we were told by the other levels of government, that if anybody is in North Rockville, it doesn't meet that criteria. So, yeah, it's a rock and a hard place.
Counselor Thompson?
The other thing that we as councils have to be cognizant of is that grant isn't just for the City of Grand Forks. That grant is for the boundary. So if we want to start mucking around and with changes to the grant itself, it's not only our taxpayers that could be jeopardized by losing the grant, it could be other municipalities and regional areas as well that were impacted by this flood. So I'm just saying, let's exercise some caution here. Yeah, would we, would we like to be able to get everything that we want and ask for? Yeah, we would. But the thing is, is that it doesn't preclude us from advocating at UBCMs with the powers that we have for more money. But I don't, and I'm going to say it again, I don't want to jeopardize losing that money because it's not just Grand Forks that loses out on it.
And I support the grant on the basis that I think moving ahead and actually putting ourselves in a position of implementing gives us the best bargaining position. Once we're moving ahead with it, I think that we can look at a lot of wiggle room that comes with the fact that nobody on the government side wants this to fail. They want it to work, and if we're telling them we need some flexibility here and there and some changes, our best position is if we're in the game, moving forward on it. So I'm going to support the motion. Counselor Moslin?
I'd like to move amendments.
You may.
I would like to strike the words in unison.
And Counselor Thompson has already said that she would like to keep that in, or...
Yeah, so that would be an amended motion.
Okay, so the amendment of taking out that, are you making a motion of that, counsel?
I'm moving it, yeah.
And the seconder for that would be, local board, Counselor Zelinski? Discussion on the amendment? Counselor Moslin?
Counselor, mayor, council always speaks in unison. The whole thing is redundant, and I can support it if you strike it out in unison. Because, of course, the intent of the motion is that we all speak the same, that we all, you know, and when a public appearance happens, we all speak the same, well, we do, you know, nobody's... It, you know, it has happened, but most of the time, it's pretty rare, council speaks in unison. We don't need the words in unison. So that's why I moved to have them removed.
All right, and any further discussion on the amendment of taking in unison out? Counselor Thompson?
Speaking against the motion, it is speaking in unison on this particular issue. And we have not always spoken in unison on this particular issue. And so for me, it is important that those words remain in.
Okay. And further discussion on the amendment? On the amendment, all those in favor of the amendment, all those opposed, amendment is failed. Bringing us back to the main motion on item number two, which is, council speak in unison in support of implementing permanent risk reduction. Are we ready for that question? Okay, the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Moving down to number three. Again, you know, the discussion earlier was that there's going to be more than quarterly reports, that we're going to be ongoing as part of the moving forward and keeping track of all the things that are going on. So I'm seeing this as more a formal quarterly information session, whereas on a month-to-month, day-to-day basis, I'm hearing that council wants to be in that discussion and constantly monitoring how this is moving forward with our New Capital Projects Manager. So Counselor Thompson, this is your motion on the floor?
Yes, as originally, with no...
No changes?
No changes.
And seconder is good with that? And discussion, Counselor Krog?
Yep.
Are we voting already?
Let's give it a second there.
Oh, okay.
But it's been seconded. It's just been so long.
And on this motion, are you ready for the questions? All those in favor, opposed, that was unanimous.
That was in unison.
I didn't have to put the words in either.
Yeah, thank you, counsel. I know these are difficult questions, and thank you, Counselor Thompson, for bringing that forward, and the floor is still yours in terms of your report.
I threw my report, but I believe our CEO has some comments he needs to know.
Your worship, staff just kind of made a note, the one resolution that council had put forward in the, which meeting was it here? It was the one that Counselor Zelinski had picked out, the R-68, or R-268 resolution.
On the 12th, or the...
Yes, on the 12th, yeah, and it's the one where it says, "The City of Grand Forks formally requests both the provincial federal government's grant additional funds for expropriated properties." Staff is just kind of catching this one, and I guess at this point, it would be a piece for the mayor to be able to bring that back. A suggestion there is, it wouldn't be just for expropriated properties, but for acquired properties.
And also to add a piece about allowing for some flexibility towards a pre-flood value, instead of saying, let's ask for 6.6 million again, to have more, so Graham's letter that he's going to try to write allows for a little bit of movement on both sides? The situation where we may get some of that, but not all of it?
If we come up with some...
Or in-kind, or this...
Yeah, we'll use the in-kind and maybe cash, and then they talk about...
The way that a solution is right now, it doesn't give us that option.
Okay.
It's very just singular to expropriation and not just acquired.
Okay, and I would use my prerogative to bring that back to the floor at this point. Counselor Zelinski?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that since we're not going to get the letter from the ministries until the 16th, maybe the amendment at that time would...
But that would be past the 30 days, though.
Okay, that would exceed my ability to bring it back, although with unanimous, we can do anything.
Yeah.
But I'd like to see them given some time to formulate a position here that needs to be really carefully worded, so that we open that door, that if you can't give us the whole thing, what do you got?
Well, one of the problems we have now, being so late, is whoever we're sending the letter to is not going to get it in time for UBCM. They're not going to see that letter. So we're going to have to promote the heck of it when we get there, because it's September 16th, and if we send it back, then a minister's not going to see it in a couple of weeks.
Well, if we wait any longer, it's going to, it's not going to be in the system at all.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, we're going to have to do it on the floor, the ministers aren't going to have that letter in their pocket.
Okay.
Okay, but it's a resolution.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So the idea would be to, if we amend the motion today, the letter that Graham has been working on already speaks towards this, and we can get this letter out way quicker than on the 16th, so it could be out before the end of the week.
All right, I'd like that.
Okay, we're getting copies of that thing.
Okay, I would make the motion that's on there and ask for a seconder.
I'll second for discussion.
Counselor Krog?
We need...
Can we use the word...
I need to see where the motion is.
To acquired...
Yeah. For acquiring properties.
Do we need to, or you're bringing this back?
Yeah, and I made the motion, Counselor Krog.
Okay.
And what is the motion?
We're fixing, no, no, we're fixing it right now.
So is the motion to rescind the previous motion and redo a new one, or is it to amend the existing one? What's the motion?
Um, replace.
I would say, your worship, the best way to do it, to keep the formality of the resolution, is that council would decide to rescind this existing resolution and replace it with the amended resolution would be the proper way to do that.
Can we do that in one motion?
No, we need to...
Do you want to take it out first? Okay, so back to my making the motion here, that we rescind the previous motion, seconder for that, Counselor Krog. Discussion on that matter? All those in favor, so rescind it. And now I made the motion, Counselor Krog seconds it for this motion to be adopted. Counselor Moslin?
Do the words for acquired properties have to, I guess, yeah...
Can I ask for the rationale? Are you asking why?
Yeah, so my other plea, your worship, is that we have flexibility in more than funding, that we have, so how, we're going to need flexibility in timing, who pays out who when, because, you know, $53 million for our community, we don't have it in the bank. The other thing I would like to plead for flexibility on is the application of the money in terms of the end product. How much latitude are we going to be given? I'd really like to discover that.
And we would all like to know that. That's been a question on the table for the last two or three months. And so I like the word flexibility used in that context. I think it leaves it wide open to applying that flexibility to other areas that require it within that context.
Well, this is saying something else.
Well, we're asking for additional funds and flexibility.
So my suggestion was take out acquired properties.
Okay, I got, I got a thing for that.
Okay, let's hear from...
Senator Mayor, so my understanding of the original resolution was based on community feedback and council sentiment, that additional funds were needed for helping get the properties towards pre-fund value, so this is part of the lobbying effort to get that, very much directed at the value of land acquisition. The word expropriated was problematic, because if we do things right, there should be few or non-expropiation, no expropiations, you know, it's inevitable, any large project... You know, it's inevitable ending large project, that some things could go that direction. But the request for additional funds, it's very targeted at this question of helping make the land acquisition more successful than it might otherwise be. That's a major risk to the overall project.
Right.
Secondly, flexibility is very much about flexibility to have the appraisal method and to have the in-kind consideration and other aspects be applied in a way that success is able to be negotiated for as opposed to really strict, narrow confines of current market value. So depending how you exactly apply all the measures, can we have flexibility to make sure we're aiming for success as opposed to aiming for litigation? So that, I think, is the intent of the original council sentiment. But we're suggesting that there could be some refinement to make it, you know, right on target.
Council Crog?
Okay, so, um... Yeah, lose the acquired. So it just starts there at the four. For the acquisition of properties necessary to meet the objectives of the DMFA or flood mitigation or whatever word is. So it's for the acquisition of properties necessary to meet the objectives. Right? So that's why we want the extra money. Is we want to meet those objectives of whatever, flood mitigation, DMFA, whatever sounds the best. But in other words, it's like, hey dude, if you want to do this, you can give us more money.
Question on this, too. Do we need the support of the regional district?
We are administering the DMF. The regional district has assigned that to us.
To us, yeah. Because, again, we're dealing with other areas that I don't... I mean, I support what we're trying to do. I just don't want to put anybody else.
We are doing things in the regional district under this grant, but it is being done through the city. And so, you know, I don't see a problem at this point linking to the regional district.
Does anyone know what those projects need to be for this part?
We do. I don't know whether we need to review them tonight. There's a number of them. Can I ask Mr. Watk what he thinks of the suggestions that are made by Council Crog?
Senator, thank you. Okay, one concern is that takes out toward or at pre-flood value, which were in the original. So is there the intent for having pre-flood value recognized in the request for additional support and flexibility?
Sorry, that's what I was thinking. And I thought that we could put that toward the... back in. But then I thought, wait a minute. What if we just say it's the acquisition of properties and we don't tell them? Well, it's not that we don't tell them, it's just that...
Don't have a sense of...
We're not advertising, oh, we finally got our pre-flood that you guys wouldn't give us before. It's just more or less, oh yeah, this is what we need to get them.
Graham, I see a nod in your hand there. Are we coming up with some wording here that's...
I think that's fair. I think that works with the letter.
Okay, and asking Crog if he would accept this wording then as a secondor to this motion?
Well, can I have a moment?
Yes.
Counsel? Further discussion on this?
No, I just want to read the motion before...
Okay.
Yeah, I just like the... Because I thought I heard Council Moslin say something different, that the flexibility is in the overall plan, not just the acquisition of properties.
That was my answer, yes.
You know, and I was stretching it to try and push the issue with flexibility. We need it everywhere, not just...
Yeah.
Yeah, but this is, it's just towards the purchase of properties. And I'd rather refer back to Council Moslin's intent as far as flexibility in the whole application, not just the...
And I'm not sure that we can add that kind of context to it in this motion.
Okay, I thought that's what you were trying to do with the word flexibility.
Yeah, but then you're changing the whole intent of the application if you want to be flexible on the whole.
On the whole.
But true, I just thought that was Council Moslin's intent.
No, I was...
I'm sorry to hear that. Well, this puppy's not going to walk far. Sure, well, let's go there. I know I support it with the amended wording.
Okay. We're ready for a question on this?
Just a minute, no. Are we deleting any words in there?
No.
Yeah, the ones with lines.
For acquired properties. Okay, so the resolution is that the City of Grand Forks formally requests both the provincial and federal governments for grant additional funds have flexibility for the acquisition of properties necessary to meet the objectives of the DMFA.
The lower version is the one with the... Any more questions?
That's the motion, Council Crog?
So we're taking out the pre-flood value?
You're taking out all?
That's what we're doing. We're just not... If they've already said no pre-flood, the minute you put "pre-flood" in the letter, they go, well, we told you no.
Right?
Right?
Okay, so this is... This is so that, yeah.
So not to give them the trigger word?
Yeah, yeah.
Ready for the question on this, Counsel? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry.
Question, Mr. Mayor? Seeing as it has come back, my original question still stands. How are we going to lobby the government? Is there one letter to one department and that's all we're doing? Or is there more of a strategic plan on...
I think we need to discuss our plan for UBCM.
Yeah.
I think that Graham knows where this letter would most effectively go in terms of through the system. And we ourselves, I think, need to caucus about how we would approach it at UBCM with Farnsworth, I'm assuming.
And plus, they can't use the precedent word again, because pre-flood... Post-flood, that does... So it takes it out. So they can do this, give us money and say, no, we didn't give them pre-flood value.
So just to clarify, who did what meetings with?
Good question.
What did you ask for?
I don't know whether we firmed up any meetings.
Yeah.
Have we firmed up?
IHA canceled, I think.
Will we have Jennifer Rice's support at some point in this?
The District of Affairs and Housing. Who else do we have? I think the Premier was another one.
Okay.
Yep. Well, so far, they haven't... They've confirmed that. I've sent them an email. They haven't given me the actual...
Do we don't have the time yet?
Times and dates. Industry for Mental Health and Addictions. And I have one more. Minister of Health. That's what council was all discussing in here, and that's what I based my requests on.
Okay.
I do not mean the administrator.
Yeah, they can't change the administrator.
Administrator.
So besides the minister's, council has the option to meet with the minister's staff. You don't have to... They create appointments, you can actually make appointments while you're at the UBCM. And that's what we did last year, when we addressed some of those other concerns. And so you've got to reach staff at a different level, but you don't have to pre-do those ones.
So you usually get an invitation from RCMP also? Did we get one?
We requested last year.
Okay, so it's not a planned invitation to meet with RCMP?
That is again, Farnsworth Department.
He wouldn't necessarily have his commander's division.
He's the top guy to assign...
They have an area where the staff, the RCMP and FD housing and a number of organizations that are government bodies that are there, but not the ministry or the staff.
Okay. Can someone find out how we can meet with the RCMP? I think, you know, Zach and something on Facebook is finding the RCMP asking for more support from politicians.
Yes.
And so if we can find out how we can do that for them.
We need to firm up our plans for UBCM. That's agreed.
Because when we met in last year, didn't they tell us a letter requesting more members?
Yeah, we did.
And we did send that letter?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so, moving on with reports. Council Thompson, have you finished with your report?
Yes, I think I've taken up a lot of time.
And moving on to Council Moslin's report?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Basically, there's the... First one is the Social Services Advisory Group that met on August 13th. You've got... I don't even know what's necessary. The meeting focused on council's decision to enforce its bylaws on June 24th. Majority of the table, including healthcare providers and the RCMP, believes that forcing the warming center away from the Talson Drive was a mistake. The meeting was also in unanimous agreement that a year-round shelter is necessary. At the end of the meeting, a resolution was passed calling upon council to rescind the decision so that the Talson building can be used for temporary winter shelter this year. We have received the letter and some correspondence later on in this agenda. And unfortunately, that reconsideration would not be advisable as it contravenes council's own procedures bylaw, which restricts reconsideration to a six-month period. Moreover, it's highly unlikely that the necessary unanimous motion to reconsider at this meeting will pass. Furthermore, the city is being sued by the building's owner and future negotiations are pretty much impossible until that is resolved. So it is hard to imagine a worse mess. Another temporary solution for an extreme weather shelter is being sought, and it is hoped that it could be rotated through the churches and halls. It's going to be problematic. Maybe it'll happen. Nonetheless, I believe it behooves council to lead this issue by defining these services and zoning their use. Council has instructed staff to ready definitions and recommendations on zoning for later this month. Council Zalinski has offered definitions in his report. Okay, and I truly hope the advisory committee will assist us with that as well, as I believe that we can use this table as a sounding board. Anyhow, I'd like to make the following motion. Move that council receives advisory committee's recommendation for a year-round shelter and request the advisory's committee input on appropriate zoning for this facility.
Counsel makes that motion?
I make the motion.
And the secondor? Seeing no secondor, is that dying? I would make a secondor motion on that, then, Council Moslin?
Okay, thank you, your worship. I believe that we need to use this community table to help us navigate through these housing situations in town, whether it's a transition house or a shelter or a low rent or supportive housing. We need this table to help us. And I'm trying to build a relationship between the table in such a way that, you know, the council can hear them, take their advice seriously. They are mature people, though. They quite understand that they are just supplying recommendations. They are not making policy. Anyhow, so I hope the council can pass this motion so that we can, you know, charge the advisory committee to give us the advice on that, which we need advice on. Thank you.
Council Crog?
Yeah, I've told this to Council Moslin earlier. Because when I read it and I read the letter, recommendations for a year-round shelter by the advisory committee, based on what? Based on what data, what pit count, what? Or is it just the same people that are sitting at the table? Who were running the warming center, who say that, yeah, we need a full-time thing, there's 60 people? All of that stuff. So I like the idea of the committee and stuff like that. And they can make a recommendation for a year-round shelter when they back it up with actual facts and data, not just hearsay and people's belief.
Yeah, I see this as the most knowledgeable people on social issues in our community. And for us to disregard what they're saying is telling me...
I'm not dis...
Counsel feels like they know more than this committee knows. And I understand the need for data. That was certainly a topic of the meeting as well, that there is more need for appointing time count, various other kinds of projections of actual need. But at this point, I think that we need to respect the fact these are the principal service providers within our community. If we disregard what their opinions are, I think that at this point in time, we're basically neutering that committee. Counsel Crog has spoken. How about Council Thompson, and back to Crog?
I speak against this motion because I have an issue with the year-round shelter for a community our size. I'm not convinced that it was a unanimous decision or at the committee recommendation or at this meeting that was held and this was discussed. So I would like, perhaps, the chair of that committee and maybe a couple of others that want to speak to this. I've not... No disrespect to you, Council Moslin, but to come and make a presentation to council is supporting this need for this action. So at this point in time, until I have more information, I can't support this.
So this is receiving or not deciding on this, just to be clarifying the wording here? This is receives the recommendations?
And requesting.
And requesting their further involvement? Council Crog?
Yeah, there's a big difference between extreme weather shelters and year-round shelters. So I can see that committee advising that a cold weather, severe weather shelter is required. Right? But without more data to say why a year-round shelter... We've seen what? One version of a year-round shelter looks like, and I'm definitely not impressed. So, yeah, there's a big difference.
Council Corley?
I was at that meeting, and I felt that went around in circles without decisions being made. And in the end, since that point, things have changed a lot with the provider, with all sorts of things in that area. So honestly, I think we need to leave the warming center and its issues to that group right now. And when they come back with a good solution or a good suggestion, let's look at it. I really, truly don't feel it's up to us to find a place to house everybody. We have so many things that are on our plate right now that it is just impossible for us to do everything. So I... The people at that committee, and now the second committee, or whoever they are, they are professionals and they are experts at this particular area. Let's let them deal with it and come with recommendations. And let's listen to them talk, see what they have to say. And I mean, if it's just a matter of supporting what they may do, let's look at it. But I really don't think it's our responsibility to find out a place to put this. Let people find it and then come to us and talk to us about that. So if this advisory group says, you know, we have a perfect place for this, great solution, we've done all the work up on it, we've got a provider. Now that's going to be the key for everything, is our responsible provider of all these services. And we have to have the services, and we don't. So when all that is done, then let's look at the program and all the things involved. Because at this point, there's not done. And I don't think it's us.
Your worship, just to... Your Worship, just to, you know, talk, you know, people at that meeting, you know, the minutes of which I did distribute, you know, we had representatives from the school district, Citizens for Avetagram Forks, the RCMP, FIS, Boundary Women's Shelter, Whispers, Healthcare Co-op, Downtown Business Association, Gospel Chapel, and Habitat for Humanity. So, it definitely is a credible group. You know, as I warned the Council early, the minutes have not been approved by the group, they don't meet again until September the 17th. The minutes are there, and I just quoted them as that they came to me. It seems to me that if we don't, the very basic thing to do is to tell this group where we would like to see a shelter. Why should they go to all the work of finding a perfect location and a service provider, and then come to us and say, and we'll say, "No, it doesn't fit the zoning." Our job is to do the zoning. We have to... You don't like it there, okay, where do you want it? You don't want it in town, well, I'll put it in the zoning. You can't leave all these... People wanna come with help, they wanna help, they wanna deliver services. They wanna know where they can deliver the services to. Yeah, you're right, you won't get any services if you don't tell them the basics, where you want it. Thank you.
Councilor Zalinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll take the other end of that argument, where we always heard that, yes, Council, you can give us this piece of dirt, but, oh, no, it's not close to services, it won't do, and whatnot. So, we've heard the argument on the other side, that, yeah, Council can zone a piece of property, but it doesn't work for them. So, I've heard that other argument.
Them being who?
Them being the people that are looking for a year-round shelter.
Them being the funders? That's where it seems like the then happens, that it's not acceptable to fund.
Well, let's go back to 70th Street location. We were ready to zone a property for supportive housing, not, similar to a warming center or supporting that group, and we were told it wasn't a good enough spot. So, that's why I'm with Councilor Corleto to say, let the group find a place, and we can try and zone around it. Because we tried to say, here's a good spot for supportive housing, and we were told, no, that's not a good spot. So, I just wanna get back to the letter that we did receive from that group, and as far as I know, we never sent a letter to Weeds, Glass, and Gifts. We sent a letter to the property owner, which I don't think is the same name. So, them requesting us to rescind something with a company just isn't viable, we don't do that, we dealt with the property owner. So, I guess if we're gonna get a request from the group, hopefully it's a request that we can actually deal with. But I wanted to ask Councilor Moslin also if you're willing to separate that motion into two separate parts, as far as...
Have any better luck on either part?
Well, you know, I have no problem supporting the Advisory Committee and looking for their help in trying to find a spot.
Appropriate zoning?
Yeah, and I'm back to my first comment about the letter we got from them really doesn't fit, because we don't deal with a business like that, we deal with landowners, so.
But I think that they are one in the same here. The use of Weeds or the company name in this case was an effort on our part, on the efforts part, to put a name behind who it was sent to, so we understood it was sent to the owner of the property.
Yeah, I haven't seen the letter, so I don't know, I thought it was too...
The letter went from the Planning Department when you made the motion.
Yeah, and did it say Weeds, Glass, and Gift?
I'm not sure what that...
A special company of name, probably.
I think it was a numbered company.
Numbered, yeah. Okay, so splitting areas to make that issue.
Well, but it is important to us, like...
Why?
Well, if we're gonna send a letter, we wouldn't send it to the company, we'd send it to the owner of the property.
We would certainly clarify that before we sent a letter, but I don't see that that muddies the waters.
Oh, no, I'm not saying it doesn't muddy the waters, it's just that, if we're asking to rescind something, We did not send a letter to Weeds, Gifts and Glass, we sent a letter to a numbered company, which is the owner of the building.
Which is Weeds and Glass.
Okay, that's not what I...
To your business ass, from what you're saying.
Yeah, and I'm just clarifying that with planning, that this is one in the same.
With respect, though, the whole issue is moot. We're not dealing with rescinding any motion, and the motion doesn't make any reference to that.
Yeah.
On the advice about splitting it, you know, I'm really struggling to make sure that this advisory group volunteers, service providers in our communities feels valued.
And not given an impossible task at this point, which is what I think we're laying on the rule.
Yeah, pleasing people who are already pledged to say no.
There is not an easy solution for them, and I don't think they have the capabilities of finding the exact spot.
But just to clarify, Council did not give this group a mandate of any sort.
Well, that's what I'm trying, actually, Councilor Zalinski, that's exactly what the motion is trying to do, I'm trying to give them, please, give us some advice. I mean, if things go well on September 16th, staff is gonna give us a report on zoning and definitions, right? Well, we'll be expected to bone up on it and be prepared for the next meeting.
Is this committee strictly dealing with homeless and people with addictions?
No, well, social services is what they call it.
No, they have a broader mandate than that, this is on the top of their list of concerns because it affects the well-being of the whole community. But there are other issues that they could tackle, yes.
And they will in time.
Well, I'd like to see a representation, other than the Council liaison, to come to Council with a presentation.
On what?
On what they're asking for, give us some backup. This is, we had this meeting, and this is what the RCMP said, and this is what Interior Health said, and this is what Mental Health said, and this is what, you know...
That's why there was minutes.
But, but, they're not adopted.
No, they're not.
They're subject to correction.
You're going back to the meeting on September 17th.
So, to me, I just cannot support this.
Okay, let's remember that if we don't get this sorted out, we have no winter shelter, and we're gonna be into cold weather within the next month. And we were in that mess last year, the motions, the actions we took last year were somewhat out of desperation, because we had nothing. So, we're entering that same scary period where we'd have nothing.
And I had no issue with that, but it was abused. And it went on and on and on, and so...
Okay, you know, you're arguing your personal opinion of how it went, but in fact, the problem in front of us is that, are we gonna listen to this group and help them, or are we gonna, at this point in time, ask them to come and present to a document that they've already discussed in depth and give us minutes on, and a recommendation?
When best, they came and made presentations on a fairly regular basis.
I know I was best.
So, what's the, why can't this group come and make a presentation?
You know, Council, that's a very, maybe they might, you tell them what they would like to make a presentation on.
They're the ones that are asking, so come and give us your ask.
Okay, well, as the mayor's pointed out, there is a little bit of function of time here. And, you know, their next meeting is September the 17th, and, you know, we won't be able to rescind, you know, okay, deliver that message, it was pretty obvious to begin with. Council received your hints, but wasn't very happy about your recommendation for a year-round shelter. And we're not too sure that we want your input on appropriate zoning. Is that what you want me to say?
Yeah. Councilor Krog.
Alls I asked was the background information and data that would be required to support that. Anybody can say they need a year-round shelter, but we haven't done any of those things. So, I'm not saying that we're not supporting, I'm just saying, show us why. Like, why is this required? And we had, you know, like I was talking to Chris earlier, and there was stuff, well, the RCMP thinks closing the center was a mistake, and if I'm the RCMP and I can have all of the people that I may be looking for in one location, that benefits me, right? Makes my job easier, and that's exactly what Interior Health said. "Oh, yeah, if they're all, oh, that's way better for us." Well, are you gonna give us some money or help? No.
I actually was jacking in a lot of services into that, Councilor Krog. Okay, we are going in circles at this point.
Yeah.
Council, the motion on the floor that we're making, myself and Councilor Moslin, stands as-is for a decision.
I don't see, I'm not too sure if the amendment will pass, Your Worship, not the amendment or the split of them.
Nor do I.
So, you know...
You ready for a question?
Let's do this, let's do it.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion is defeated. Councilor Moslin, you're still have the floor.
Yeah, I'm voting zero for four. On August 20th, Council had a special in camera meeting to discuss the DMAP project and its impact on the community. The minutes for this meeting are released and will illustrate the difficult decisions Council faced with this successful grant application. Then on August 26th, Council reviewed the floodplain mapping developed by Urban Systems in a workshop with staff. Five scenarios were presented that illustrated what would happen if the river once again reached 2018 flood levels with the proposed dikes in place. And I'd like to make the motion that that floodplain work, mapping workshop, on August 26th, or whatever date it actually ends up being on, be presented to the community at a public meeting.
Can I have a secondary for that motion? Councilor Zalinski. I support it, I think that we need to put out there the information that shows the kind of gyrations that we've gone through in terms of looking at everything possible as a variation on the theme. Councilor Moslin led this with five or six very specific scenarios that we went through. I mean, it shows the community, we are struggling with finding flexibility in the plan, even though we're moving ahead with it from our motions tonight, we're not giving up on modifying that to better our needs. Councilor Thompson.
Yeah, I support this because I think it is something that the residents who are directly impacted by these scenarios will be able to view and see, as you've said, that the struggles that Council has had, and why we've had to make some of the very difficult decisions we've had to make. So, I think that's a really good idea.
Further, the motion is on the floor, Councilor Moslin seconded by Councilor Zalinski. More discussion? Sorry. Does the staff need some direction?
Mayor, actually, thankfully, this is actually part of the work plan, and it's in the budget to have Urban Systems come down and present on not only the mitigation modeling, but the entire floodplain modeling results, the overall floodplain effect on the community, different types of flooding, how the flood progresses, and mitigation options, effect of those, as well as floodplain bylaws, and, you know, so it's a matter of scheduling and finding the right time within the project, we're looking at October as likely the best fit, given the UCM and other constraints.
So, supporting the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Ready for the question, Councilor? All those in favor, opposed?
See that one?
Councilor Zalinski votes against, is that four? That was an against. Councilor Moslin, you're still on.
I know, I got one more thing, just, I attended Discover Grand Forks on August the 19th. Despite the minutes of that association, I am on the Trail Subcommittee, and I've been working hard on trail forks when I've had a moment. They are looking at participating in the regional district's trail master plans, so I sure hope it comes off. And they talked about their own branding and logos tying in with the wayfaring that's going to be going on. The beautification process of the new market district was highlighted, and everyone who lives in Grand Forks needs to go hang out downtown. It is indeed beautiful, it's getting there, mar beautiful every day, and there's much more to come. I do also wanna thank Purple Stain and Scotty Cap for this beautiful colored metallic coin. This is a Geo coin. I got it for, 100 of these were made, I got it for completely, for finding 25 Geo cashes that were cleverly hit throughout the boundary from basically Rock Creek to Christina Lake. Very scenic, very beautiful places, and I encourage people to become Geo cashers, there's about, I think there's about 20 of these left.
So, hide and go seek.
It is, it's, you know, with a smartphone. And it's actually a lot of fun, because it'll take you to all sorts of places you thought you'd been before. And I just wanna say, in closing, have a good school year, everyone. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. Councilor Moslin, and finally, Councilor Zalinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, my report basically speaks for itself, there's four different definitions, I hope to have Council debate over the next few weeks here, and I'll be putting in a motion to go to public hearing on those during our discussions over the next couple of weeks here. So, having said that, basically on the same topic, and a question to staff, we're expecting a community kitchen down in our core commercial, so if staff could just go through how they see a community kitchen fitting in the core commercial, so I'm sure appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And I would caution again, I used the term today unadvisedly, unprofessional, what I meant was amateur. I think that by writing this kind of stuff, at times, it's dangerous, especially when you act quickly on it, like you did with the motion that forced the Planning Department to send a letter to Weeds or the numbered company, that caused the kind of situation we're in now, where we have a lawsuit on our hands. I think that the restaurant one in particular supports the complicated case that we're facing there, where you use the term soup kitchen, which I see as derogatory, and where it signals, again, some continued effort on your part to address homeless and disadvantaged people within our community. So, I think it does show a bias that we're gonna be challenged with in future. This could potentially cost us a lot of money if we don't find a way out of this. And I see it, to some extent, as a reckless motion that was made and supported by Council, as something that was to be done, but there was no planning to it. We didn't send it back and say to our Planning Department, is this gonna compromise us? Is this gonna put us in a dangerous position? And it did. And so, that's why I caution about, you know, writing these things when we have paid staff that should be recommending these kinds of things to us. I think it's great to give them input, and I think you have done this with this, although I really question the implications of your definition of restaurant, and whether or not it's meant to be retroactive in your idea, to stop the community kitchen that is currently being planned. It looks like that's part of the same sort of efforts on your part to derail that kitchen.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the dialogue and the debate on the definitions. I do take your comments of being amateur to heart, seeing as I did take this right from the City of Columbus webpage. So, again, they're there for discussion, and I look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further comments? Councilor Moslin.
Yeah, I would like to thank Councilor Zalinski for putting this out there. Let's get it out there. I've got some suggestive changes that I look forward to... I've got some suggestive changes that I look forward to discussing. And, you know, one of the reasons I don't like DMATH is because I'm a do-it-yourselfer. Sorry, no. You never know. Anyhow, so I thank Counsel Zalinski for putting these forward, and if nothing else, I'll be able to take this to the meeting on September the 17th. Thank you.
Counsel Thompson?
Yes, I support Counsel Zalinski in bringing this forward as well. I mean, he wants to discuss it, improve on it, and do what is going to be correct for Grand Forks. And if you've taken it off the City of Colona zoning bylaw definitions, then I would suggest that it is not amateurish or unprofessional.
Thank you. And Counsel Krog?
Yeah, a couple of things. I do agree with some of that stuff. Just because it says does not include community kitchen or soup kitchen. That's what we're working on is definitions and zoning where those things best meet the needs of the community. I totally disagree with the challenge to Counsel Zalinski and the court case that will be coming up. Weeds is suing everybody. There's a list of communities and a list of lawsuits that are being done. And we did what we were allowed to do and followed our principles, so.
You challenged the Planning Department and made a motion to override the Planning Department's previous decisions. Counsel Thompson?
Yeah, that's what we do.
I would remind Counsel that there was an application from the Winnipeg or the Winnipeg that was denied because it didn't meet the criteria in the zoning bylaw. And if we've got bylaws with criteria in them, they have to be followed, whether we agree or we don't agree. That is what the councils of the day determined until it's amended. I think we would be remiss and subject to challenge by others.
Amended or varied? Because there are options there. Anyway, I would request at this point that we continue this after we get consultation from our lawyer, who's been away for the last couple of weeks. Counsel Krog?
All I want to do is thank Counsel Zalinski for starting the conversation on this, because I think that's important. We need to go forward from this, whether we totally agree with every word, that will come to light. But I thank you for that. And I do believe we have to follow our bylaws, whether it's got to do with variances or changes of different things, until such time as they've been amended or changed or something. We live by rules and policies.
Yes, we do.
And that's part of it, so, thanks.
Okay, and I will further discuss this after we've had some consultation with our And can I have a motion to accept counsel reports?
No, I'm not done.
Oh, well, go ahead.
Mine's brief, and I've got nothing serious. I did attend that meeting, the Social Services Advisory Group, and as I said before, things have changed and evolved since that meeting. There's been a whole change of things, so where we go from here will remain to be seen. So I did participate in all the workshops and worked on our strategic plans and things like that. I did attend the Boundary Museum regular meeting, and they have been looking for a manager or assistant manager of the museum for some time. And they mentioned they had several applicants, so I think that's great, and they will make this decision soon. Their request for funding is coming soon, and at that point, I will recommend audited financial reports, statements to be provided. The museum's 40 by 60 building is nearing completion. They're working hard on improvements to the museum building as well. I do believe the management of the museum artifacts and pieces need to be revisited and maybe structured a little differently. I also attended the Better at Homes program that was presented by the United Way. And what an interesting project, and I think that it has a lot of merit, and hopefully we can support that as it comes through. If nothing else, it's because, you know, it's an aging community, and people are going to need help, and we need to respect their pride and their sensibilities. So I really believe this is a good program. One other thing, I was at the community meeting for the residents, Ruckel. I believe it's time for us to devote as much energy as we can to getting everyone settled, moving forward their lives, and just doing the right thing as best as we can. I also want to take the time to say thank you to the residents of Ruckel. I mentioned earlier that I feel that you saw a great fortitude and strength, and that goes to all the people that experienced flooding issues and catastrophes. And we will find a resolution to it all. I have faith in that. So the summer has flown by, many meetings, too few solutions. My list of accomplishments may seem small, however, many hours have been spent learning, debating, and trying to find the best way forward. And I want to congratulate all the stores as I have gone forward with their murals. I have sat downtown on the corner of Market and Third, watching the paint dry with many of them, and it's been really entertaining and interesting to talk to them and watch the progress and all that. And I just think it's a wonderful project as well. So that's it for me.
Further counsel comments, reports? Motion to accept counsel reports. Counsel Moslin, Counsel Krog, all those in favor. And we're moving to the Regional District. Tomorrow at 10 o'clock is the BCDC Regional Meeting, and we hardly ever get anyone from the community. Community can come and sit, there's seating, they're not at the table, only the elected representatives, but it's a great opportunity to see some of the things at the RD level that directly affect us. So that's probably the best opportunity to do that, and the occasional meetings that they actually have here from Regional District. But the BCDC is related to all of us, all of the regional districts and the small towns to the west of us. So again, that's an open invitation, but I'm not going to use any more of this agenda here. I mentioned this morning that I really feel I need to out my game in getting regional information to you. Counsel Krog?
Is that a Regional District?
That's a Regional District office, yeah, at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. Okay. Since I haven't really delivered anything, do we need a motion there to accept the Regional District report? Probably not. Recommendations for staff from staff for decisions? The first item on that list is the Fire Department capital and operating budget reallocations. And speaking to that, who has the pleasure of doing that? Josh Jaws?
I can quickly speak, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, I believe Counsel determined to defer this item to tonight.
That's correct.
But I believe the questioning was more regarding if we had a chance to discuss these items with the RDKB. And I believe Ms. Rhodes went ahead and tried to find out more information on that.
Yes, so I did have a conversation with the Regional District, my counterpart over there, and she conferred with Mark Anderson on what they would or wouldn't agree to pay a share of. So her answer to me was that the investigative report, well, essentially the first four items on the list, their stand was that these are administrative items and not related to the operations of the Fire Department. So they said that they would not be agreeable to paying a share of that. They did agree that the testing was something that would be shared, a shared cost, and capital items in the agreement are actually, there's a hundred percent, hundred percent, where we actually have a reserve for our own capital items and they have a reserve for their own. So with respect to the testing, though, if we were over budget as a result of this, then they expect us to actually mitigate, but they would consider covering it if we were over budget.
As in operational item?
Yes.
Counsel, this was our desire to have this moved to tonight's meeting. Counsel Zalinski?
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. So basically, looking at the resolution and everything, we're on the hook for the whole bit of saying. Is there possibility to get a copy of the agreement just to find out what we're up against in the future?
I'm sure that that could be accessible to you. Does that affect your consideration of this matter on the table?
Yeah.
All right, so if you can make a note that Counsel Zalinski would like to see the agreement with the Regional District.
Yeah, I'll put sharepoint here for everybody to take.
Counsel, are you ready to make this motion?
I just, clarification, the Regional District doesn't support everything in this list. They want us to be responsible for, I'm thinking, a good portion of this?
Yes.
That was the answer that they, sorry, through you, Ms. Mayor, that was the answer that they gave me, but however, if, I guess, if these items, if we came in within budget, then they would still be paying the budgeted portion of their.
So this is a reallocation of money that's in the budget?
Within the budget, yes.
It was a capital project that we shelved, a truck, and we're taking that money, yeah, bit out of capital and putting it in the operating.
That's why the question was what part of it they might consider at a regional level. Still waiting for a motion on this matter.
So moved, Your Worship.
Counsel Moslin, seconded by Counsel Korglick. Further discussion? Ready for a question on this? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Moving down to the next item of business, which is the Landry Taxi Company, looking for our support. From a legislative point of view, we have a saying in it, for an additional taxi vehicle to add to its fleet. And we were being asked to support the application for an additional vehicle. Can I have that motion?
So moved.
Counsel Krog, seconded by Counsel Korglick. Discussion?
Needed.
Needed?
Yeah. Stops me from starting a new bar.
Yeah, it's not going to get to us anyway. So this sounds like a nod, so ready for the question here? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Horizon North, temporary storage of constructing materials and bins for approximately one and a half more months, August to September. And the council approves the use of the four city lots on 70th and 19th for temporary storage of construction material and bin, approximately 1.5 additional months, August and September. Can I have a motion for that? Counsel Thompson, seconded. Counsel Krog? Any discussion?
Yeah. No, just that it says from August to the end of September.
So August is gone.
Yeah, so I'm like, it's not one and a half months.
No, I know, this is the way it's worded, sorry.
I was just pointing out that same thing. Did they want it, like, September to October instead, or?
Well, I'd like to see it's flexible, but they're trying to be out of there because this place is going to be open. From the sound of it, they'll start populating at some time in late October, early November. There are applicants for every spot and more. There are a number, I don't know the exact figures, of people who are coming from Ruckel as well, from flooded areas. So those figures will come to us as they line up, but they're going through a selection process as we speak. So the company has been asked to really ramp up their speed of finish here to get this done before the cold weather. So I think our flexibility in supporting them is worthwhile here as an indication of our support for industry in our town. Counsel Thompson?
Well, why don't we just have the motion agreed to the end of September and not one and a half months from whatever to whatever? But allow them to use that land until the end of September for storage and so forth.
Do we agree to that? Modified to the wording that says, use the land till the end of September and take out approximately 1.5 months? Is that the way it would read?
Yeah.
Counsel, ready for a motion on this? Actually, a question on this. All those in favor? Opposed? And the next one is the Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Group requesting the letter be rescinded to whoever it was written to, whether that was Weeds or Numbered Company.
I would move that this letter be received for information.
And a secondary for that, Counsel Krog. Any further discussion on this matter? All those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Zalinski is opposed. And information items? This is good news that we have some success in terms of our climate action success here and that we're now at a different level of recognition by whoever decides if you're But it is, I think, opens some doors to us that will allow us to apply for grants and take advantage of our status as a committed to the environment. So again, this is received for information. Counsel makes that motion? Somebody, Counsel Thompson, Counsel Korg. Discussion further on this? Are we doing well enough? Not according to some, but anyway, I applaud the efforts that we've made as a community to this day. Motion, all those in favor? The next item of business is the Bylaw 2061, our annual permissive tax exemption bylaw. And this matter is given first three readings for the 2020 permissive tax exemption bylaw. Motion to that effect, Counsel Thompson. Seconded by Counsel Moslin. This gives us some time to review that, but the motion is to move it forward, first, second, and third reading. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The next item is, to which we had a public hearing this evening.
Are we next reading?
So this is, Counsel gives third reading to zoning bylaw 2039 A1 at the September 3 regular meeting. Counsel Thompson, Counsel Korglick. And I understand their MOT has been approved, and so this and so this should go smoothly for the fourth reading. But at this point, we're giving it third reading. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Moving us down to the release of in-camera minutes, the August 20th in-camera minutes, the August 26th camera, release of in-camera information. So this is basically for the August 20th. Is that correct?
Correct.
It's already released from the camera, Ms. Mayor.
Yes.
So it's just an information item, we don't have to vote on it?
It looks like it.
This is just the place to distribute it.
Received for information.
Oh, you don't even have to. Just included in the agenda.
Let's not do it then. Okay. But again, I'm happy to see that those minutes going up to show the kind of intensity that we've been involved in discussing DMAF. And that brings us down to questions from the public. Nora?
I really appreciate just an opportunity. It's not really a question. I just wanted to have a moment to read something to you that's sort of my truth about this whole project with Rocco. I'm not representing, sorry, I'm not representing the other people in my group. It's just me, I just would like a chance to read it into some public record of some description. So can you indulge me for a second? Thank you. One of the members of our group posted the following, I wax a little poetic here, posted a quote from an old Woody Guthrie song called Pretty Boy Floyd. "Some men rob you with a six-gun, others rob you with a fountain pen." Later in the same song, he refers to it not being the outlaws that are driving a family from their home. "I've struggled from the point that the buyouts came and the destruction of North Rocco. First surface to understand the absolute refusal to consider less invasive solutions or to look at simpler ways to solve the issues. I was confused as to why common sense was so completely dismissed. It has been like playing a game in which the other team seems to know all the rules and my little group only knows part of the rules. What seemed like obvious answers that we were suggesting were not accepted because we didn't know that the rulebook had already disallowed those rules, already disallowed those moves. After much research and some helpful suggestions from interested parties, I think I get it. We were playing a game against a stacked deck. The Sendei Framework for Disaster Risk Reduction is a UN program put to paper in a Japanese town called Sendei in 2015. Many countries have signed onto it, including Canada. It lays out goals and systems for disaster mitigation globally. Once Canada signed on, it meant it would plan and create programs and protocols that fit within the Sendei framework. What better way to implement a program than to create grants that can only be attained by meeting the requirements of that program? And DMAF was born. Adaptation is at the heart of the DMAF program. In our case, adaptation required 11 heckcares be returned to the riparian zone. I would dare say Dobson's brief included finding the least expensive way to offer up that adaptation. North Rocco was it. And each and every individual that lived on those heckcares became a part of that adaptation. Once that plan was in play, it could not be messed with without losing the grant upon which it was based. It didn't matter if it didn't make sense. It didn't matter if it might not work. It didn't matter if it was ridiculously expensive because, hey, if we got the grant, we got that covered. All common sense stopped at that point. So the fountain pen that is robbing us started in Sendei in 2015 when a group of powerful people inked a plan for resilience and building back better that has astonishingly filtered down through various Canadian and provincial policies to little old us, a tiny town that no one around that table has ever heard of. And that's where common sense died. I've heard there are many staff who have been involved in carrying out this plan who are suffering from extreme stress and I can understand this. The plan doesn't make sense and yet they have to put their hearts and souls into implementing it. In this case, it has meant destroying a neighborhood, losing many good citizens, either physically because they've already or will be forced to move elsewhere, or more emotionally, as they no longer truly feel part of a town that has thrown them away. I mean, I do appreciate your efforts, but that's the way it feels. Who among us ever thought we would one day see our little town wielding the fountain pen in that Woody Guthrie song? Dave and I will rebound, but I fear for a community that will have to work around and through this hurtful episode on into the future. So thank you very much, I just needed to say that. Thank you for indulging me and I do appreciate your efforts to continue to try to get additional funding. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Nora. Further from the gallery or from the media? Les, sure, and then?
Go ahead, Les. No, no, go ahead.
Les Johnson, GFTB taxpayer. I was at that social, that meeting with the stakeholders in the social services and I remember that, yeah, the bulk of the meeting was about was roof or whatever should be there because that was the major topic that they had after they disposed of the agenda business. And the very first thing that the chairperson asked was, can we all agree that we need a, you know, bad-witted shelter? And I felt kind of funny because nobody in that room was living rough. Everybody there has a roof over their heads. But yes, everybody agreed. And then later on, it was put forward and nobody really disagreed with it, that two months and that's it. You have to have something in place in two months. Otherwise, you're not going to make it and there won't be a shelter. And it was also pointed out by one of the people sitting at the table that there's no way that in two months you will have your review of bylaws regarding zoning in place to be able to adapt yourself in time to be able to provide a zoning that you could use. And even though there were two members of the C4 group there at the table and another one sitting in the wings, and they put forth their, what they feel is a requirement, they really couldn't come up with another place in time. They even come up with an answer that nobody else seems to be able to come up with. And when I heard the detachment commander for the RCMP go through simply on his fingers, "Well, it's in a place that's not strictly residential, it is industrial, and it's not too far from services. It's pretty much ideal for the purpose that it's been used for. I know you don't want it to be open year-round, I get it." And that was one of the clauses that the member of the C4 group put in there. They want bookends, they want a clear opening and closing and everything else. But you had two counselors there, a representative, a liaison, and one of them's bringing you minutes, even though they aren't officially published, yet you still insist that the wheels of bureaucracy be fed properly and that they come before you and tell you what they want. So you can tell them what you want them to do so they can go back and try and pull a rabbit out of a hat somewhere in this town where they can put a warming center in time before we go and end up with, like we had two winters ago, some guy rolling around in a wheelchair because he lost parts of his feet to frostbite because it does get cold here. We have real winter. To quote that great cinematic thing, "Winter's coming and it's going to bite, but it won't bite you. So you don't have to worry about that. But you won't have a place, you're not going to find a place. I know that you're not going to find a place because there is no place that they could use. And you're not going to have your zoning in time for that. So I wonder what you're going to do? Well, this really made a big difference what you do for them, the people who end up spending their time living rough outside. They're going to hope to have friends that can get them on when the snow hits and the temperatures go frozen. I mean, it's just, when you look at that whole thing about the wheels of bureaucracy grinding really slow and the wheels of government's grinding really slow, this is a prime example of that. Everybody at that table was in agreement, even the people from the C4 group were in agreement that there was not going to be another place found. But it's not going to happen in time. Period. That's, I just wanted to put my observation out there because that's the, that's where we're at and where we will be in a couple of months. And I understand that Pam who lives across the street probably has a completely different opinion on how she feels about this. I get that, I do. And the treatment she got, definitely nobody should get that. But that's the fact for these people who have to live rough. They're going to be losing fingers and toes. And we got to hope, as taxpayers, that they don't get a good lawyer to come back on us to pay for those fingers and toes. That's it.
Okay, thank you. And you know, we're not going to debate it tonight, but Ms. Kennedy?
Okay, so I wasn't at the AC meeting, but I definitely have been following everything to the T. I also have attended the, the meeting is called CAT.
Community Action.
There were several people there. We are working, there's work for these individuals in town. I have to correct you, Les. The individual, to best of my knowledge, unless you can prove me different, the individual that lost his feet to the extreme weather refused help. He had an option and he refused it. So please prove me wrong on that one. It's not just my house, it's not my house. We have Valmar kids that walk through that puddle that has been there forever. Every kid in Valmar, West End, you name it, play in that puddle. We have so many seniors and everything. And just down below the hill is the A&amp;W area. And then there's so many people that use that area. They walk all the way from North Fork. So when you say me, it's just not me, it's everyone. And I get to watch it. So and with the AC group, as far as I know, Mr. Dwayne Foster took control of that meeting and he would not let it go. And there was going to be a suggestion put forward. And what I hear tonight is that that third option that the DBA, the RCMP, the nurses, health authorities and everyone else have not addressed and it has been brought up, but it seems to be swept under the rug. Churches, why not? They have been used in the past, it has been suggested by Tammy. One second. And, but it's not been utilized. And all I'm saying is churches this year, so we actually have time to figure out what to do with these individuals and not scab it together like a bad welding job. Do it right. Not, not, none of this stuff. No, I'm sorry, Brian, you shut me down every time.
No, I'm just, I think you've made your points well and this is not a debate here.
I know it's not a debate, but it really needs to be heard because I keep on hearing it's just Pam's house, Pam's the NIMBY. No, it's not just me and I do care for these individuals. I don't want to see them hurt. I have made suggestions about bringing two into my house and it has not happened. I can't see that another winter of the free-for-all and me every time worried that when I see a high individual there is going to take a walk and OD. I can't keep on doing that. $900,000 was spent on that place and then yet I listen to people crying in this room today. And the individuals at the warming center have not helped themselves in eight months. And the flood victims have been going after this for a year and a half and they're struggling and they only get $48,000 on top of a mortgage. So they, what the heck, man? Eight months. And I did talk to an individual and she did go back home. Guess what? She's back in town. She needs help, she needs help and we need to find her help. Scabbing it together, being a free-for-all, no rules or anything like that, it's not helping these individuals. And I'll be damned if I'll sit and turn a blind eye while I watch another person die on a snowbank, Brian. We have to do this right. And the health authorities and the RCMP, which are, ooh. Is his kids involved on this one? No, Mr. Constable, whoever you are. The, no, are there any of these people that were sitting at the table invested? Are they invested personally? No, they get to walk away from their nine-to-five job and go sit at their lake property or up in the hillsides like yourself. They don't have to see it day in, day out, like I do and the rest of the community. When I see seniors that are quite frail in their older age, but they're enjoying the walk because you know what? Donaldson Drive, so many people use it. So many people access all sorts of different areas of the community via that road. It's not just a highway for the transport vehicles. It's a corridor for our people of the town.
All right, thank you very much, Counsel.
Thank you.
I hope I didn't cut you too short. And?
Go ahead.
You go ahead. Nora?
I'm here on behalf of the Boundary Peace Initiative and peace in, peace out. We are invited for formally and officially inviting all of council to come to the USCC Hall on September 20th to 21st, 24 hours. So anytime, you can't sleep, come join us. We have entertainment and all kinds of things going on. We've also designated two hours on Saturday from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. for a kids' talent show.
Sounds exciting.
So, and Mr. Mayor, we are inviting you to join us for our opening ceremonies.
On the 20th?
On the 20th at 4:00 p.m. And we're hoping that our premier will join us either in person or through a Skype connection for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Notice you didn't say guitar.
What?
Branding guitars.
Yeah, you can come with your guitar if you want, sure, why not?
We're working it out tomorrow.
I'm handling the talent in that show, Brian, so we'll talk about it.
You can sing us a Woody Guthrie song.
Okay, and Jensen?
Yeah, a couple things. First, when Dana was listing the meetings scheduled for UBCM, I didn't hear Ministry of Public Safety, which is Farnsworth. Is there a meeting scheduled in Farnsworth?
I'm not going to know at this point.
Is that something that you'd try and get?
That's the policing request, I believe, needs to go to Farnsworth. But I couldn't wrong.
So when council originally had discussion like about two months ago, the topics that council wanted to talk about fit to those ministries at the time. So I had to make these appointments several months back. If there is, we can still talk to some of the minister's staff, but not necessarily the minister himself.
Okay. And then, shifting gears, the financial plan came up today. I was wondering if personnel changes like a new fire chief or anything would have to be factored into the financial plan and revised.
Will it be affecting the financial plan?
Yeah.
Hopefully not.
You know, trying to work within a budget. I don't think that our moves at this point, our changes are outside of the budget parameters. So we are still working within budget for those changes.
Okay. And is there any timeline on when the new fire chief would be?
I think the posting closes on?
September 13th.
13th. Okay, that it? It's been a long night. Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.